Okay, orders of the day. Public hearing, local law, overriding tax cap.
I'll make the motion open the public hearing, man.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody have any comments on overriding the tax cap? All right, we'll leave that open. Please somebody can send questions on that. Move on to public hearing, local law, no parking for Waters Terrace, make a motion to open that.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, would anybody like to speak on Waters Terrace, no parking?
Yes, I would. I jump on it, President Waters Terrace. I've lived on this street for forty years. And I can say without hesitation that the parking situation on that street has deteriorated significantly. There's a, it's created an unsafe condition as far as I'm concerned, as far as traffic. And as far as accessing the street from a driveway. Usually I have cars parked right up to the edge of my driveway. And when I'm bracketed by a pickup truck, indoor large SUV, I feel like I'm taking my life in my hands by backing it out of the street. So I'd like to see something done to reduce or eliminate parking on the south side of the street. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else have any comments on Waters Terrace?
I'm Kathleen Plus. I'm Mr. Monahan's neighbor, actually. I've lived on Waters Terrace for about seventeen years and I know what Mr. Monahan is speaking of. I am a homeowner also. I share a driveway with my neighbor. And I hate to see parking go away on Waters Terrace because we rely on that for visitors, people coming and going. I'm thinking, I understand what Mr. Monahan is saying. I think, I didn't grow up here and I apologize for me being naive to the system and things like that. But wondering if maybe we could, if there's any way that even if they could lease that area and gave a few tickets to people who maybe were doing some of the things that were making the parking situation not favorable, that that may help and encourage positive parking and, you know, positive driving and things that will be safer. I just hate to see there be some type of limit on parking. And I'm not aware of how that would function, but...
Anybody else have any comments?
Hi, I'm Murray Western. I live on Waters Terrace as well, across the street from Joe and Kath. And for me personally, it doesn't really affect me because I don't have to drive in and out of my driveway during the day when all of the parking is very full. But I do notice that the students who park there try to fit as many cars in as possible. So perhaps that's something that can be worked on in, like Kath said, ticketing one tow. And I think they'll learn a lesson. But I feel like it's a situation that could be worked on collaboratively with the students. And I do also have concerns about there being no parking on Waters Terrace. And I do wonder if there is some other alternative to what the problem is. Perhaps there could be some brainstorming and some potential solutions besides just a blanket no parking. Thank you.
Yep. It powered off.
Well, something I looked over, I thought it did. Good thing we got that.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else have any comments on Waters Terrace? Okay, so you know, you've had a couple of questions. I might be able to answer some of them. Number one, we've got pictures here if you want to see. Some of them are people actually blocking driveways up there. I have talked the situation over with the police chief, Sargea, our BPW superintendent. And one of the things you brought up about having your, you know, people come that want to stay, see you at your house. So one thing we're thinking, we'd like to possibly do is leave it no parking on the north side like it is right now. Change the south side to no parking between 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, September 1st through June 30th. And here that's going to come back. I know you're here for the school, but basically...
I don't represent the school today.
Well, basically, the parking, the student parking with the school is not really the village's problem. I think Lavo County, as far as I can think back, is the only school in Lewis County that does not have a space for their students to park. And actually, in the village, the students might have to walk a little bit, but there are other locations that can park. There's lots of room at the Lavo Commons. They just have to walk up. Parking over in Veterans Park. So there is alternative parks. But that's just another alternative we've been looking at.
I think our issue is during the day when school's in session, as you can see from some of these pictures...
You're welcome. I love these.
Yeah.
We let their way.
And now, now there's so many vehicles there. They park up around the bend. As far as safety concern in the winter, plowing, we have a hard time getting our plow down through there with the cars there. A real safety concern, which should be a concern of Joe's, is if there was ever a fire on that side of the street, to get any apparatus in there, and I've been in the fire for around thirty years, to get any apparatus in there to actually fight a fire would be tough because the cars that are there are kids that are in school. To get them to move, so, you know, it would take tons of time to get it there. I mean, you've seen the pictures. You've been up there. So that's, that's kind of our concern.
More of the hill there on the corner where it starts scoring around.
I'm not sure of the form here. Is it okay to ask a question?
Yeah.
I guess as an educator also and a parent, I would like to, we had a fire at our house on Waters Terrace, unfortunately. And the fire department was absolutely amazing. I grew up in the city of Buffalo and it's not a volunteer fire department. The fire department was absolutely amazing and did a fabulous job. And yes, parking may have been an issue, but it didn't impede that. But I guess if we're talking about students, we want them to be good drivers and parkers in wherever they park. So to just move the problem somewhere else in the town, I would hope that we would try to address it with the police enforcing proper parking and things like that. Because if I'm going to have work done on my home in the middle of the week, it's going to be on a Monday at seven o'clock AM and they're going to park, I'm going to need to park somewhere. And that's a personal, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there that we're just moving the problem somewhere else if we're not actually addressing if there's a problem with...
But like you're talking contractor, that's not really a central problem if they're going to be there. Like, basically, we've had cases like that where they had to put a trailer, like out on Park Ave for a day or something. But usually they'll contact the village or the police department and say, we're going to be doing work on some of that tonight. And usually they'll get permission to be able to do that.
No, and I understand that, Mr. Bigel. Thank you. I guess my other, my concern is we're just pushing that problem somewhere else. Those young people are going to be driving in our community and do drive and need to know if they're parking illegally, they should get a ticket or tow.
Well, right now, they're not parking illegally because it's...
Or, I mean, if they're parking in front of my driveway or Joe's driveway,
Yeah, but that would...
They should be taken at their tow.
There's, like I said, there's plenty of room down at Lavo Commons and there's probably some room over there at the Veterans Park. That whole county uses some of that.
Yeah, and that's really...
I mean, they just have to walk from Commons. They go downtown for lunch, so it's not, I wouldn't think it'd be a big deal to walk up from the Commons parking lot.
I have a question. Is Waters Terrace a particularly narrow street compared to, is that what part of the street is?
It's a narrow street that we have in the knowledge, too.
Okay.
So like, I, I think there's parking on, is it the north side of Trinity Ave from Park Ave back to East State? Is that a wider street so that student parking might not be as negatively impactful as it is on Waters Terrace? If might not change them being in driveways, that still needs to be followed up on with the police department, but at least it wouldn't be as narrow. Is that part of your...
I'm trying to, just to clear something up. Some of that area is only two hour parking.
Right, and they would have to abide by the signs.
And one other concern that was brought up to my attention is the amount of pedestrians that walk across Karaswak. So at early in the morning, you know how traffic bobbles next, and then at three o'clock or whenever the kids get old. So that, that was another concern that we had talked about, too.
Can I just respond to that? I did hear that that had come up. And I, I mean, this is, I haven't done a study to check the data on this, but a lot of young children cross there not, I would, my personal opinion on that is that it's not the high school students who park on the street that are creating that problem. You don't bus within a certain amount of mileage, but there's a lot of children that cross there, so I don't know.
I think that from my perspective, first, we mentioned students, but my feeling is as a village, we're giving parking to whoever we can. We shouldn't single out students. We shouldn't single out the courthouse. Parking where we can provide it from a safety standpoint is where it is. You're right about, you know, fairness of using the better term, we're going to kick this can down the road if we do something here. And then we'll have somebody else in here, and I understand that. And that's going to continue because the kids are going to beat the people that work in the courthouse to work. And so now their parking is going to move somewhere else. I had a chance to talk with Mr. Hinkleman to mention to him that this public hearing was taking place. And he said, it doesn't affect me. My parking lot's going to be full every day either way anyways. We have an administrative agreement with them. So I think that, I think rather than make a decision tonight on any kind of a public hearing, I think somebody that's involved in that street, we need to have some kind of committee where we can determine what's doable for everybody that works for everybody. And I really thought there'd be more than three this year, but I'm glad you came.
Does anybody else have any more comments on Waters Terrace? Do you have anything, Joe?
It is a concern, but we can figure, we can figure that stuff out. We have issues, so...
Okay, we'll leave both those public hearings open for a while in case somebody shows up. We'll move on to approval of minutes, February 16th, 2022 Record Board. And a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Ken's not with us tonight. We need a motion to excuse Tim Winter from the meeting.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to excuse him.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of vouchers.
Vouchers, the general fund for the amount of seventy thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eight two cents. We have water for forty thousand, fifty-six dollars and thirty-four cents. Sewer fund of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred, seventeen dollars and sixty-two cents. Capital of one hundred and sixty dollars all have been audited. And I have made the motion to approve those vouchers.
One hundred and sixty.
Thank you.
We have a second on that?
So?
All in favor?
Aye.
Unfinished business, Five Streets Utility Reconstruction Project.
We had a repair for the, on the sewer line on Trinity was repaired. That was something that showed up in the, in the videos, the testing videos that were run. And we had a repair sleeve put in there. That was complete last week. I'm making final edits to the as-built and I'll get those to, to Paul and the contractor. I was on Five Streets, Joe. Any questions on Five Streets?
I don't have any questions. I don't know if you guys had a chance to drive down Trinity, but that street is rougher than streets in, in there forty years. It's disappointing. I hear a lot about it out in the public. I learned, I wanted to know that. Thank you.
Phase two wastewater treatment plant upgrades.
Just an update on the schedule. APG should be coming in beginning of work, first week of May. The only other thing I wanted to talk about was the standardization thing. I guess I kind of need Joe's help on that one.
This one, we're going to do a motion for those diffusers?
Yeah.
That's about it. You need a motion adopted by the board in the minutes, so... Basically, what we're talking about here is down there at the lagoons, the diffusers that let the air into the lagoons from where the blowers. We pretty much want to stand, excuse me, standardize them to Parkson because that's what we're using down there right now. And that's what we have spare parts and things for. And that's what our employees are familiar with overhaul and repairing. And so we kind of like to standardize so we don't have a mismatch of diffusers. So basically, we want to put that out to bid. And so that's why we need a motion to do that. Exactly how you want it, Joe?
Basically, what you want to have in the minutes is that for the, for purposes of efficiency and economy, I even want to standardize that particular item, whatever it is, to, to the one you mentioned. You still have to put it out to bid.
Yeah.
It's standardizing what you're going to, what you're going to put...
But this will allow us to be able to put it out to bid.
Yep. You need a motion to that effect adopted by at least three members of the board.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes, I was hoping you guys could standardize the aqualogics, the skater system. They currently maintain and operate the skater system in the village for sewer and water plants. So we're making some upgrades and as part of the water project. And it would, it would make sense to standardize with aqualogics as well for the...
And for the same reasons, it's efficiency, it's cost effectiveness. And if you, if you put it out to bid with or equal, you'll have two systems, right? You'll have one at your wastewater plant and you'll have something else managing your water plant. You'll need to understand how to operate both of those and the computer systems for both of those. And so it really makes a lot of sense to just standardize it.
You okay with that?
Yeah. And it is what you're using at both of those. It just happens to be that way. We just didn't want to have another... If, if you, if you end up with another option, you could have a whole mess on your hands to manage.
So can we have a motion for the same reasons of standardized with aqualogics?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Just, I just want to know on the wastewater, we're going to get out the bid for the diffuser equipment, but I just wanted to know that we've been talking with Parkson. And there's a bit of a lead time on those units right now, fourteen to sixteen weeks. So we're going to push this bid out and get, you know, open as soon as we can to get this thing open. But I just wanted you guys to be aware of that right now.
The standardizing also helps with that. It removes that, the alternatives in the discussion and the bidding and all that that goes along with it. So now there's one product that they bid on and it goes, it'll go much quicker.
Is that it on the water development project?
I don't have much from up there right now. We're still waiting on DOH to respond back to us. I do want to know if we did get, kind of get a verbal approval from the DUC. We were on the phone with them last week. So that, that portion of approvals should hopefully be wrapped up, but we're still waiting, awaiting DOH to respond. We've been working on getting the construction documents ready, getting the bid documents ready. So that lets DOH let us respond. We can push this thing out to bid as soon as possible.
And, and Mike Tracy, I talked to Mike Tracy yesterday about another project. And he did say that he's, he has some, there are some comments and they're, they're putting those together. He's trying to get us a draft this week. So we did get a little bit of information from the DOH, but they're not, I guess it's more news than no news. But it's just, it's coming, right? It's in the mail, basically, we told them. And the DUC part of that approval that Kevin mentioned, that's the water supply application, which is how much water you can draw from the, from your watershed. And so we have that number now and it's, it's what we were designing towards anyways on the, on the water, on the water department side, so...
Yeah, I remember they said that we were pretty close to getting us...
We had that call, we made that conference call with them. They kind of settled on a number there and they, they wanted to go back and look at it a couple different other ways. And they did. They're saying it's approved.
At least it's moving forward.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we also have that amendment.
I'm going to say, I got it right here. But that's the only other thing you guys got, right?
That's right. Thanks, Joe.
Okay, based on what we got, this is amendment to the engineering agreement with Geiwo on the groundwater development project. I believe this is covered under our contingency, right?
Yes.
That's another hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars. And really, we got the Department of Health to blame for that because we met with them. They said how they wanted things set up. The engineers designed it the way they asked that. And then after they took another look at it, they came back and said, no, maybe you guys were right the first time. So our guys had to go back. And so that's where these extra costs came in because they were back and forth. So basically, we need a motion to pass that. But that's where it comes from. I'd love to build in Department of Health, but...
If you do, maybe you want to hold off until we get this letter. Keep your bail on that one. Hold off. But, you know, Joe, what Joe said, he described it pretty well. We had a game plan. We talked to the Health Department about it. They came back and said, this is how we want you to do it. Did that.
Which was a change from the original plan that we came up with.
And we, and so we went down that road and that was where we were crossing Mr. Morrison's property. He had required a separate building. It had, it had a different connection point out on the number four road. So we were in a different township, planning, organizing and everything for those buildings. So there's a lot of extra complications with that, that design, which we went down, not to the end of it, but pretty close to the end of it. And we had to, we had to, when we submitted those plans to the Health Department, they reviewed them and essentially said, go back to where you started and redo this. And, and we've, and we've gone down that, we've done that too and submitted it. And this is, this is the, you know, this is the amendment. And what I separated, I separated out the costs that were the extras, right? It's the stuff that we did plan on doing that we did. And had that been approved, we, we may not have had an extra, but we were just doing it within our original budget. But now we're kind of doing our original budget all over again, our original design all over again.
And if this is what we have to do, we'll make the motion. Need to stop now.
That's okay. One thing is, luckily we got contingency to cover that. Do we have a second on that? A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else on the Peter role?
No, you talk about the contingency and what, when we did the bond resolution last, must have been fall, we're still, we did that because of this design change the Health Department did and it increased the project cost. We're, we're still in that, we think we're still in that same budget. So it's in that contingency and, you know, so there's, there's a safe amount of contingency left in that budget. Just hope they don't change it again. Well, this conversation with Mike Tracy was, just tell me I'm on the right path, right? It's not, I'm not starting over again. He said, no, we're, we're on the right path, so...
Okay, LED street lighting. Paul and I have been back and forth with one of the contractors, with New York Power Authority, with Window. They finally, I did get it late this afternoon. They punched us. If you're not used, I'll get it to you. We also notified them that they got to get things cleaned up down at the sewer plant because we need that space coming April 1st for our projects. And there's been movement on, do you want to talk about the, or you want me to talk about the...
It's up to you.
Mickey's been working with Cassandra and everybody to get submitted for the shared services monies that we got coming. And I guess there was a few issues with that because they made some changes after we already got into the program, thanks to Mickey. Cassandra and Window, they got the numbers back up there where they should be because originally they were really talking, getting us back. Looking for a hundred thousand to get us back by ten thousand, but now it looks like we'll get a little over ninety-two thousand, which is a lot better than ten.
Yeah, it was about ninety-two percent of what you originally were tagged for instead of the ten percent.
But it was a lot of work on, I think even the Town Hill Commission, Cassandra, you know, Window, to get them to get straightened out because, let's say, we had our agreement and then all of a sudden COVID hit, things slowed down. And then I guess the things changed, but it shouldn't really be that effective.
Yeah, and DOH was good to make it all work to them. They worked with us on that.
So unless you have anything else, that's about it on that. Resolving of industrial zone options, a lot of that's, I know Tim's been working on that and he's not here tonight. Do you have anything?
No, he, he basically said, sit tight and we'll get, we'll get to it right back.
Okay, comprehensive plan, basically. What happened on that was everything, the secret was done. It went to the county. They came back with a bunch of options that they were looking for. And it was, basically, I think it's, it was a computer problem because when stuff got printed, it dropped off a letter here and there on a lot of words. So instead of being like a dog, it was just T8. So those, those corrections had to be Paul made along with some other things. Basically, a week after our last meeting, Paul, myself, Tom Winter from the town, we sat down here, we had a Zoom meeting with Mickey and Alina and Matt and made all those corrections. And then Alina was working on it and then she ended up going out on maternity. So wound up in Matt's lap. And I got an email from Matt today that as of this afternoon, is supposed to be back to the county for their preview again. And so we are moving forward with that. So it's just a matter here and back, what the county has to say now. And then hopefully we can schedule our public hearing and from there maybe adopt it. That's the status of that at the moment. Lewis County Facilities Improvement Project, Lead Agency, the county, as you all know... Los County Facilities Improvement Project Lead Agency, the county, as you all know, already claimed that they're going to be lead agency. I had no response from the letter I sent them. Paul and I did sit in on a meeting with them and the town. While commenting on that, it looks like there's not really going to be too much that's going to affect the village on. The two projects we looked at was the D S S building and the county highway garage. Do you have anything on that?
No, it's, uh, looking at claims and everything. It's really, the storm drain's not going to affect us, sewer's not going to affect us, so.
That's about. Okay, new business. Craft surcharges, January twenty twenty-two was sixty-five hundred for sewer. February twenty twenty-two was four thousand for sewer. February twenty twenty-two, zero on water. So we have a motion to approve those surcharges?
I'll make the motion to approve those surcharges.
Second?
I'll second.
You'll favor?
Go ahead.
You two go ahead. I'll tell you.
Aye. Aye.
I'll favor, okay.
I just want to comment on it. Craft has been in contact with me. I've gotten a few emails from Eric Lee. He has told me that cream cheese is not going to go seven days a week, twenty-four hours, two chefs. Um, he did say that they're still working on some issues, um, continuing to work on issues. But he wanted to let me know that he thought possibly the sewer, sewer outcome or outflow will be more for a little time being until they get things corrected there. Um, he said you might see an increase in water too. We haven't yet. I just saw my chief operator today and they're still using around eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand. But, um, I just want to say, you know, it's good that Craft is, we're, we're in good relations with him. When something goes up there, he emails me, so hopefully we can stay on those type of terms.
Okay, local law amendment, water's terrace parking, let's keep that open for a little while. We move on to craft, local law tax cap override. As of yesterday, we weren't going to need the tax cap override. As of this morning, we do. And it's all a little glitch from the state controller. He was up here in February. We went through things, uh, because one thing that's changing our tax cap is we're getting rid of the village court. It's going to the town. So that affects our tax cap this year. It's going to be like a one-time thing. Well, in his calculations, he forgot to take a few things in when he was too old. And he gave us one number. Well, he got back to us this morning and said he made a mistake, got the right number. And we called him back, or Daniel did, went over it with him. So with this number, uh, we'll get into it when we get the budget, we'll see what they are. But because of that, we have to override the tax cap. So I guess we need a motion to override the tax cap. It's not going to affect our budget or anything. We're still going to be able to not have a tax increase this year. But we just are going to be over the tax cap because of what's, by the switching of courts.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Citizen of the Year Award, uh, I know it's now on the website. So anybody who wants to go in there and get the application to, for anybody that can. Do you have anything more on that?
I gave some out to the fire department the other night when I was at the meeting. But as of today, I have, I have not seen any applications back. And Nick Calpier is going to put it up on this website next week or two. And maybe we'll do some kind of a story. I know somebody said that they had somebody that, I think it was maybe Charlie, that somebody wanted an application. Charlie didn't get it off the website or I got some.
We'll get them together.
Dan, you know, we talked about that last year. Would you, um, like to do that presentation during the fair? Because I know Josh, Josh was very.
I think that's, that just made a good point. Let's see who wins. Some people are apprehensive of that. Would I like to do it at the fair? Yes. That's my own personal opinion, but Josh didn't feel comfortable.
If whoever wins, and if you want to do it at the fair, if they want to, just let me know and I'll arrange that.
Have they, have they brought it up again or, or is it just something you'd like to see? I don't, I don't have a problem. I just, I think maybe, uh, if anything, we could maybe some more communities to start looking at it and doing it themselves also. We've got, we've got a dozen people out there that, that totally deserve this award. And last year we only had several people down there. I'm hoping we get a dozen this year, but right now I, I have no.
And there's not to prick on you, but I believe twelve months ago you were in panic mode because you didn't have any of your, or, or, they'll come in.
No, I'm not in panic mode, but.
You were two, twelve months ago because you had, that was the first year. You're going to get some at the last, people, if you say it due on April thirtieth, they're going to do it April twenty-ninth. I mean, that's the way it is.
Better route, you're too long.
Long, right. Just, you don't have any, do you? All right, let's move on.
Okay, organizational meetings, setting a date. Basically, the date that has to be is April sixth, which is a Wednesday. Basically, we're going to have the two meetings.
I'll be in Florida then, so, aye, that's fine.
And, uh, what's that?
Four P M?
Yes. The other thing we need to do on April sixth is, uh, we have to have a public hearing on the budget before April fifteenth. So we should schedule our public hearing for the budget, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget for April sixth also. I need a motion to do that.
I'll make the motion to set the public hearing for the budget on April sixth, four P M.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Russell, can I be at a consumer or is that no longer applied?
You can, you can, you can participate, but you can't take, you can't vote.
Okay, I think Town Law and Water District, that's what you're working on, right?
Yeah, it's all taken care of.
Do you want to explain on that one there?
Um, originally, the Town of Lavo, um, and a permit that we've dug up in two thousand and five stated from the D E C that they could take forty thousand gallons per day from us for Water District One. Talking with Christina Mackey with the D E C, because we haven't had any other permits. The Town of Lavo would like to increase that due to expansions, possibly Tommers Park up by the Bowon Alley. I don't know. They've had Maple Ridge Run, which is in District One. So they, they're using a lot more water. So they would like to increase that to fifty thousand gallons per day. And so I went back to the D E C, asked them about the permit, how to increase it. And it was actually, it was kind of abolished back in, I believe, two thousand and eighteen for villages with districts to have a permit. So they don't do a permit, um, for them anymore. So she said, basically, it's up to the villages, the municipal board, the board.
The municipal board already approved it, right?
Yes, the municipal board already approved fifty thousand, so.
So it's just a matter of a motion from this board to approve it.
Correct.
Basically, we just need a motion to approve increasing Town of Lavo's water. And that's what District One?
Yes. I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Call in favor?
Aye.
And it brings us down to the tentative budget for twenty twenty-two and twenty-three. I know all the board members just got a copy today, so we have a really odd chance of getting that. It's pretty much, uh, a bare bones budget with no tax increase through the coming year. We kept the tax rate at last year's rate. We figure the people out there are getting hit in the pocketbook between fuel, oil, natural gas, heating, gas, groceries. Try and give them a little break someplace, so we're going to try and do a little few things and keep things tight this year. So if anybody has any comments, you know, before the next meeting, please let me know or Daniel. See something you might want to change and do. The way it looks right now, we're going to be fine with the water and fine with the sewer side of things. There is a little deficit on the general fund, but we'll be, uh, taking that out of reserves to make up that deficit on the general fund side of things. So anybody have any other questions on that? And you can see on your sheet, there's a tax cap that shows we're going to be over like twenty thousand dollars. That's why we had, we had to do the tax cap. I'd say again, that's all because of the change in the courts as well.
Boy, we're getting redshirt in our money market account. I think the decimal points are on place, isn't it?
I don't know.
It's terrible.
Yeah, it's horrible.
That's what it is.
It was like point oh.
Oh, yeah, I think we got a decimal point there.
I wish, yeah, no, I was looking at it. Especially when you look at like twenty eighteen and what we were getting.
Well, I agree, I'm back in twenty-ten and twenty-eleven.
Put your money on your mattress.
Recall February newsletter, anybody got any questions on that? Pretty self-explanatory. We got Lavo Academy and Central School Sand and Sweep Contract. Interesting to see the letter that, uh, it's going to be the school here twenty-two, twenty-three. The district is going to try and take care of the sweeping and sanding on their own. So they're alone, we're going to need us to do a contract for them for that year. Which in one way, we'll be able to use our manpower elsewhere. Not a problem. Anybody have any questions on any of those items? Okay, the Butler player, it says Shakespeare in the Park. Little background on that, uh, I talked to this, uh, Daniel Roy. Basically, it's her group that's going to put the show on, but it's being done through the Lavo Historical Society. And so, uh, she's been back in contact with them and I told them, uh, basically, they're looking fifty to a hundred people. That's no more than like if we had out there on a night, we're having a band or Lavo Village Band or one of the other bands that we have coming, there's, have that many people. So I told her as long as we have a liability and insurance certificate from the historical society to cover this and they fill out the proper paper and pay the deposits and things, I didn't think the board would have a problem with it. But I'm bringing it up to you, so if anybody does have a problem, they let me know, I get back to them. They want to do it, um, I don't know, hopefully maybe it's on somebody else's mind, it came off, but it's in August.
I think I have yours, Sunday, August fourteenth.
Is the date they want. And that's open, I checked with Wendy, she can, matter of fact, she penciled on the Denver. Does the board have any problem with them using the park?
We'll definitely allow them to use the park on August fourteenth. They don't want to retire any, any requests.
It's on a Sunday.
I mean, I mean like four to six or whatever time.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Lavo Fire Department, looks like they got a new member. Joshua Staring, they just need a motion from the village. Had no problem with it?
I'll make the motion that we approve Joshua, Joshua, Josh Staring to the fire department. I'll stick.
I'll second. Call in favor?
Aye.
You've been taking notes, I might have made a mistake here. We did the motion to do the tax cap override.
Yeah, but we didn't close the whole thing.
I didn't close the public hearing, did I?
Not yet.
So I guess we better, we better back up and have a motion to close the public hearing on the tax cap.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
And just so that we're not backwards, I'll make the motion that, you know, make a motion for the tax cap override. So that it's in sequence the way it needs to be.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
All right, I don't see anybody else here, so let's have a motion to close the public hearing on, uh, water's terrace parking.
I'll make the motion to close that public hearing.
Second?
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
To go back about the local law amendment. You have to do something about the local law, now that we close that public hearing for water's terrace.
I make the motion that, uh, can we still table it because we closed it?
Yeah, well, you can table action on it, you closed the public hearing.
I'd like to, I'd like to make the motion to table action on it so that, uh, I guess, we have three people here tonight, maybe they'd be willing to work with, I'd be willing to work on it, maybe, to determine moving forward what we should do on water's terrace. And maybe Mr. Austin would, from the fire department standpoint, would get involved.
Well, Dan.
What else we could do?
Basically, Paul and I, that's what I told that lady there. We would make parking available on the south side for just certain hours that we have no parking there. When it comes to the school, Dan, we are not responsible for making parking places for them, for the county or anybody. And they have a place right down here on Boswick that they could turn into a parking lot.
And, and I hear you, Joe. And what I'm going to say is, that's probably exactly what I'm thinking, but I, I think maybe it should be portrayed to them, uh, and to everybody on the street. I mean, if you want to pass a law like that tonight, so be it. I just want to make sure that what you do, people don't come in and how wraps it up.
Well, even if we pass a law, we wouldn't be able to put no parking signs up now anyways. With the crossing ground and stuff, so people would still park there.
Right, I mean, number one, it's got to go before the state, everything will be approved. But the thing is, uh, if the school really wanted to do something, then they could do something. Dan, I don't know it, but nineteen point eight percent of the tax exempt property in this village is Lavo camp.
You're, you're actually preaching.
Yeah, every time you turn around, they think we need to do more for them. It's time they did something.
You're preaching to the choir. I will, uh, I will go back to nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand when a fist fight almost involved over a Woodlawn ad between Mr. Line Decker, Line Decker and Mr. Pat Wallace. I then called Mr. Warwood and said we got parking issues and I'd like the school to be involved. Mr. Warwood's remark to me at that time was, your problems, the village's problem, are, are problems. I said, okay. So we ended up closing on. I said, okay, so we ended up closing on Woodland. Fast forward a year, Ken McCough now becomes the superintendent. Alan Tuchek comes to our meeting and he says, Ken and I sat down and the village is eliminating Exumala Parking Spot. And I looked at him and I says, the school had a chance last year to be involved and they didn't. So the school's problems aren't our problems. So I hear you, I, I, I'm not arguing that. I just wanna make sure that when we do this, it's cohesive, and because you got a lot of people on that street. And one, one might be happy with somebody else, but if you wanna pass that the way it is, I don't have a problem with it, but...
No, I don't, I don't wanna pass it the way it is right now. The way it is right now, no parking on north side and south side. I think we need to amend it to be no parking on the north side like it originally was, and amend the south side to be no parking from seven in the morning until four in the afternoon, Monday through Friday, September first to June thirtieth. Basically, all we're gonna do is get the kids off the street. If you wanna have a birthday party for your granddaughter or something, like on the weekend or after four in the afternoon, you're gonna be able to park on the street.
That was my concern, I wasn't sure how you could get both sides no parking, I mean, it just doesn't...
There are streets in the villages that are like that, that state is one of them.
Right.
I mean, if you look through the codes, it'll list some different streets.
We don't know if there's any issues with the school because there's nobody here representing the school.
No, and, and I would, I, here's what I would think, I would go along with that, Joe, but rather, I, I don't wanna say, I just wanna say to provide safety, the concerns that we're, again, we don't provide parking for anybody. Yes, I understand that, uh, the school has no parking and within their campus, but I think if we just say, we're not gonna allow it from seven to three during the week because congestion or what have you, I, I, that's fine.
Well, you have concerns for that.
I'm working like, so, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of with Dan with, uh, let's wait a month at least. But I'm thinking maybe we could have another meeting, not with like, not, not like an open village meeting, but we could have like, uh, where Dan, me, Paul, Randy, and then any resident on that street can meet and discuss, just to see if there is another alternative that would better suit them rather than no parking at all from seven to four. Cause, cause even, I mean, the one brought up the concern of the contractors. I mean, I know you made exceptions in the past with trailers and stuff, but it's the same, even if, if I'm getting my bathroom redone, it's not gonna be a trailer out front, but I'm gonna have eight pickups out front cause it's eight guy, or that may be over-exaggerating a little bit, but they can't park there now if, if my driveway doesn't allow for them to park in it, so.
I mean, the village has always made allowance, we got, but if you were downtown right now, that's two hour parking downtown. But there's a project going on where there's dump trailers sitting right there with cones and things and they know we're trying to do a remodel job, so the village is not passing them, they're letting them park us. So I'm just, I mean, I, do you guys wanna wait another month? That's fine.
I get that we wanna be transparent with Waters Terrace, but I think I'd go even a step further. This, this here is a mess, I mean, this is the mess that we have right now. So, and I get why, why communicate with them, I, I, I follow that. But I'm wondering if down to their older, maybe this could, if we have a subcommittee, if that could involve into parking, taking a look at with you two at least and Randy, and maybe a board member or some community members of a parking, just if we have parking issues, a better issue for everyone here.
But did you see that one?
If you look at the second picture with my truck in there.
Correct. Well, it's, we're gonna...
There was five feet between my truck and the car that's parked on the street, so.
There's no way.
You can't get too traffic, too vehicles down there.
I'm ninety-nine percent sure that we're gonna wind up with what we just came up with. I'm just wondering if you just, if you can't get them in, if you can't get the signs up yet, like Joe says, a month is not, either way, it's not gonna...
Right, and it might be the best option.
You might even wind up...
But it might be better to tell them. And maybe no one of those two people show up anyways and you've already heard their concerns, but...
But what, the question I have is, what is the concern of the school? I mean, they're not talking about the school, but I...
I don't, I don't, at first, I don't think the school should have any say, I mean, it don't matter. But, but it is gonna be a...
They weren't, they were made aware of the public hearing.
It is going to be a nominal effect though, like we've discussed. The school starts before county employee starts, and now the county employees are not gonna park, they're not gonna have parking unless they start showing up to work early and then...
Well, you've got, you've got some of these cars that normally, in the past, have parked on Park Ave. So if you look at the parking on Park Ave, it's a lot less now, Henry, than it ever has been.
I thought there was no school.
Because now they've moved up there, cause it's closer.
But we didn't change any of the parking on Park Ave, right, so they still could technically go back on it.
This places.
You might jump, no jumping like that down there at the Leetit. The village has an agreement with them to use that as municipal park. That's why we flower and sweep it. And I don't, you know, so I mean, there's, if, basically, I guess if the kids take with the county, is all they gotta do is move down. If they get there before the county employees.
I'm okay with, like Joe said, if, you know, we wanna get together and see if people come out.
I'd usually have you welcome to that fire department rather than...
But I, but I know Joe, that was here, he, he talked to a lot of his neighbors up there, so they were all aware.
I mean, and they might, yeah, I mean, and, and like I said, maybe it is the best solution, but if we take a little bit of brainstorm, maybe we will find a better solution that everyone's happy with. Not that you ever complete everyone, so it doesn't matter, so...
Is that what the board wants to bring back next month, on the twentieth? The regular board meeting, not the special?
I, I'd make that motion. Like, do we need even a motion to ta, I mean, like...
You can just table, you can table it, and, you know, I, I'm gonna go ahead and revise the local law, add that to it, so you have it ready.
That's, that's the one we have to present to anybody, you guys.
What I was just talking about, yeah.
Yes.
And if, if there's something that comes up that maybe can we present, uh, and, and Joe would know, maybe we come up with something else and maybe phone conference? We clearly can't vote conference, so we have to vote on, you were making any other changes or not?
Well, if you, if you do something less than what you had the public hearing on, you don't need to, I mean, the public hearing's fine.
Okay.
So if you're, if you're gonna impose...
Something less.
Something less of what you put to hearing on, you're okay. And we can make those changes, and assuming that's what you wanna go with. It's seven to four P M Monday through Friday, nine and one to six thirty on the south side. That's what you're gonna deal with, right? So we'll put that, I'll get that ready for next month and if something else happens, we can...
Remember, the dates are to September first to June thirty.
Right, yep. Nine, one to six thirty. September first to June thirty.
Yes.
I've got one other thing, as I'm just sitting here. Do you think if we move that from say seven o'clock to nine o'clock in the morning, do you think we'd get that much traffic parking there?
Cause they're still not gonna park because they can't be there at nine and they're not gonna, right?
I mean, honestly, you could put it, I think you could even do shorter than that, sorry to interrupt, Paul. I mean, you could do, you could do eleven to three no parking, because the school kids still can't park there then, because they can't be there from...
Then you're limiting, like you said, if you have a contractor coming to your house. So if you say nine o'clock, most of your contractors probably getting there in the morning. Anyway.
It was just a... And another, that people minded, and I still hope to see, see what happens, is no left turn off in Davenport from seven to nine in the morning, school days, because that's creating a huge issue that exact makes all that problem in that area.
If you remember, Dan, we went that route when Donna Smith was here, we got shot down by the school and everybody else.
Well, at this point in time, I can tell you, I take my grandkids to school, and the school, she was down, or anybody else, if we think that it's best for the community, that's probably what needs to be done.
I think there's also something with the state.
The state has to make that decision.
The state has to make the decision as well.
But they're not going to unless we go to them and ask them.
But the other thing is, a lot of that up there is, drivers don't use common sense when they come up to that south side. They didn't realize all they gotta, not make it right, they'd be out of there, but no, they sit there and sit there trying to make it fly.
That's why we need that, because one driver turning left messes that up completely. I always turn right, unless, unless there's absolutely no traffic.
So getting back to Waters Terrace, where, could we just, are, we wanting to change the times now or put it off to next?
No, I just, I was just storming.
I mean, I don't have a brainstorm, storming, so.
Brainstorming, you know, I was sitting here.
I just...
So why don't we, why don't we hold off for a month and we'll get together and we'll, we'll talk about it and...
In those hours, if you come to some consensus, if you do, you know, bring it up, but it's, not a bad idea, it's...
Cause I think we know the issues, I'd say, the kids parking there that go to school. You made the motion, right?
I'll make the, I, I didn't know if the tabling needs to, but I'll make the motion to table it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Can I ask if we somehow, Chairman, I, I, I think, Joe, the idea of meeting before your fire department meeting on that Monday night might be a good idea. And we can invite people from, from a few people, I think we should invite the people that came here tonight from Waters Terrace, everyone to show their interest. Obviously, people didn't know on that street, people worked there, maybe got thirty minute brainstorm, maybe, maybe even mentioned to these three to come load in with some ideas or...
So you think the board meeting on the twenty-eighth or the actual member meeting on the...
I would like to do the board meeting on the twenty-eighth before your actual meeting. So we don't need you to park in there. You, you, you know.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, okay. Does that work for you, Paul?
Do you wanna have those in paper? Do you wanna have those in paper?
Yeah, I probably should put a notice in there.
As long as we have a minority of board members that are okay.
Right.
And the notice in the papers, great, probably not even required to do that, because it's not a...
No, but I think we...
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yep.
Someone who might have other ideas?
Informational meeting or something.
Yeah, but do we, do we want a whole bunch of people to show up? About how you don't think it's gonna happen in there. Yeah, both sides of the argument, alright. You got one that, one that no parking and one that wanted something.
So, Mr. Russell, if I put it in the paper, can I pretty much take what we posed for the public hearing now? And just change it to their meeting with the date? And just not call it like a public hearing?
Don't call it a public hearing, it's not a, it's not an official village meeting.
Right, so can I just change like some of the terminology, though, use basically the same verbiage? Okay. And that's the twenty-eighth, right?
Yeah, it's March twenty-eighth, yeah.
And what time is your meeting?
Um, I have this one at six.
Six, okay. And that's at the fire hall, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll get that out tomorrow.
Okay, village attorney, if you have anything?
I don't have anything else.
The thing I got is, uh... We were doing a budget this year. Summer rec, skating, it's all getting pretty costly. So I have asked the town to consider, uh... Their percentage right now, it's thirty percent, the village pays seventy. And I asked Bob if he'd bring it up to their board, to maybe bump it up to sixty, forty percent, where the village would pay sixty percent and the town would pay forty percent. The other thing I did was, I broke everything down, all the costs, the summer rec program and the skating program, and I sent a letter to the county manager, uh, asking him if the county would be interested in, uh... Helping offset some of our expense where we take children in from, they come from Watson, uh, Yerbrayman, Martinsburg and other areas. We don't turn anybody away on any of these programs. Matter of fact, the adults, uh, use aerobics, swim here at the high school. So, uh, I don't know where that's gonna go, but I did, uh... The dealers out there, I figure if they can give money to the snowmobile clubs, they oughta be able to help the local residents that are paying the sales tax and everything right here. So we'll see where that goes.
Well, to jump on that too, Joe, not to talk out of church, but, um, I was at a double play runs the, who runs the, uh, summer rec program.
Right, I put that in the letter.
I was at their opening and the county manager, Danny, was there as well, I'm sure you heard it, said to us, well, if we, the county can give the double play for a, for that bigger project idea, then why can't the village? Well, if they're willing to put money towards that bigger project, wouldn't they think that they'd be able to put money towards summer rec?
They would think. If they were willing to put seven point five million.
You seem to, you seem to be kind of...
And then a fair argument, we already do give towards that, it's called the sales tax revenue, we don't receive.
Right, I'm saying, right, they can afford to do that, I'm just not trying to take words out of people's mouths, but...
Well, let's see where it goes with that, I think that was a good idea, some of that for summer rec.
Okay, clerk treasure, do you have anything?
Nope, not enough.
Chief of police isn't here, but there's one thing that, uh, we've been talking with the town on this too. Dog control, I think we've brought it up at a couple of other board meetings. Basically, the town is responsible for town law and anything regards to ag markets, they have to enforce. We do have a few laws on our books that are a little bit different. And, uh, their dog control officer is a little reluctant at times to enforce those. And I know on our police departments, we're doing it. So basically, we're looking at maybe, uh, working a deal with the town where if we have to pay a little extra, that their dog control officer would definitely cover all of our laws on dogs that are different than the town's. A lot of the reasoning behind that is, they have the equipment, they have the agreements with the shelter over here for, for taking your dogs if they have to, which we would have to buy equipment, we would have to make agreements with the shelter. So they're supposed to come up before their meeting tomorrow too, and so we, after the next meeting, I'll have some ideas what those costs might be down the road, but it's just something we've been talking about. That's it there, uh, superintendent, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just got a couple of things, um, just to let the village residents know, I was talking with TF Wright today on installing our fountain, um, that should be up before the end of April. Also, I apologize to the village residents for our roads. With the deep frost that we've had this year, it has really made a mess of our roads, potholes everywhere. My DPW crew is out there every day putting coal patch in, um, trying to make it smooth, and that's about all we can do.
Capital future planning, anything?
Uh, nothing, you talked about the conference agreement, I don't have any addition?
Personnel, I have, uh, basically the draft, the new four-year police contract. I've looked it over, uh, the police department's looked it over, everybody is okay with it. So what the board would like to, I'd like to motion to, uh, be able to sign the new police contract for the next four years.
I'll make that motion.
Anybody got any questions on it, I'll try and answer them. Basically, it's the only changes with what we've talked about at the last board meeting. And the salary increases.
Yeah, I'll second.
So we just need a motion to...
We did.
I'm sorry, I got, I'm here, Dana, I didn't hear.
Motion and second. They moved me to the point.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, finance?
Uh, audits for the clerk's office are updated through November. Uh, I talked to Wendy just before the meeting. I am free tomorrow, but she isn't in the morning, so we're gonna work on our schedules and get caught up on the last couple of months. Uh, the judges ones, are they dormant now, or are they, are you still? Cause they go away at the end of this month, right? Hello? You still doing the judge ones, or what?
Judges are, uh... Uh, let's see, up until the last couple of months, all the judges are correct.
Yeah.
So?
That's, um, does anybody else throw anything else in there?
That's, um, does anybody else throw anything else there?
I'm good. Alright, fire department? Can you help me, Joe? Anything, Dan?
Fire department attended their meeting and, and afterward, we talked about the, the park, uh, and, you know, some folks have talked about maybe what they would do would be popcorn and snow cones versus. That's it, police department, did you have something?
Actually, I'd like to have a short executive session.
Okay.
For a couple of personal issues.
Planning boards, zoning boards?
Um, I'm planning, I'm attending their meeting at the end of this month, I've done that, I'm thinking two-year work.
Municipal board? Water thing there? County?
I have one of that tomorrow.
County, anything?
Uh, the only thing that I, I'll bring up most of the stuff that I talked about is we make five hundred dollars from the county for our police department.
The recreation, I talked a little, do you have anything on that?
Not really, no, I haven't read anything directly.
I'll see where it goes and send her up. Anything on the retro, on the moon's ladder?
Well, we had a good Zoom meeting last night. If you want to say anything about that.
I'll just say that we, the board did approve, uh, move forward with the economic visiting summit at Ray Cog and that'll be on April twenty-eighth, uh, from nine until noon at Zero Dock Street. So we'll be putting out a registration here soon, actually, I had a couple of things that I wanted to check out on Zero Dock Street. They basically approved those few minor changes, so. CDI, a company called CDI does promo videos for creek municipalities. Uh, one of the things they do is they post on their website though and then sell like sponsorship spots for local businesses to be on there. So they basically last night, they presented to Ray Cog and it sounded like the board, everybody was kind of in agreement, it sounded like a good thing to they look at doing, they do it region-wide for the region, the Ray Cog region, and then they'd also interview each of the supervisors and mayor, so if you want to put that video on your own website, what they'll do is take that supervisor or mayor and kind of clip that in head of the video. And then that way you can put it and it's more personalized and you can put that video on your own website, so. It sounded like you can move forward with that, they do have a banner program, they can do free banners, but it sounded like you got a lot of banners.
Kind of looked like that right there.
Yeah, yeah, it kind of looked like that, and then there's like a little spot for sponsors and they do actually have a thing where they will kind of vet the sponsors too, so obviously if there's something controversial or something like that, it'll, it'll get put on there, but and it's no charge, that's how they make their money basically, through the sponsorship and working with businesses, that they'll do videos for businesses and things like that too, so. So yeah, that was basically through by the board and.
It was pretty interesting too, really.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, uh, that was probably our two biggest things, uh, there last night was that.
I do have one more thing, uh, from the mayor, if anybody's interested, I'll give them the information. Uh, March twenty-second, there's gonna be a kickoff meeting to discuss projects for DRI. And that's the other question to the village, do you want to move forward with another application this year? We did the funding and the budget before.
Yeah, I think we budgeted the same amount.
Yeah, we did, we budgeted the same amount.
Yeah.
But they want to have a kickoff meeting on twenty-second. And if anybody wants to, I'll give you the information. I'll have it here in front of you.
Where's it gonna be, man?
What's that?
Where's it gonna be?
IDA. It's basically pretty much the same people that were, have been involved the last couple of years on. I think that's a Tuesday. I'd have to check the time, but I problem is it was sent to my home computers, I'll have it with me right now. Okay, in the public comment, was anything, Henry?
No.
Anybody else? I guess we need a motion to go on. Except for session, we have a debate for discussing these matters and.
I'll make a motion to close the public, uh, session and go into the executive session.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.